Sorry, I said the cheese jacket.
Yeah.
I would lose it.
Gonna go faster.
For that sweet jacket, of course.
Yes, yes.
Good evening, everyone. It is six thirty P. M. I will call the Tuesday, November nineteenth meeting of the Superior Common Council order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ladeen, Counselor Van Sickle, Counselor Moffett, Counselor Sweeney is absent, Counselor Fennessy, Counselor Elm, Counselor Ludwig, Counselor Herrick, Counselor Johnson, and President Graskin.
We have a quorum.
Item four point one is the approval of the November sixth twenty twenty-four regular council meeting minutes.
Motion by Counselor Elm, second by Counselor Herrick to approve the regular meeting minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Four point two is the approval of the November twelfth special council meeting minutes.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Elm is their discussion on the special committee, uh, meeting minutes. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item six point one is a report from Mayor Payne.
Uh, actually, counselors, we have a bit of an agenda. We, I, I just talked to you last week. Budgets passed, elections over. I, I got nothing. I'll talk to you in two weeks. Uh, so I have more report.
Item six point two is committee appointments to the Metropolitan Interstate Council. Reappoint Ed Anderson for a term expiring September twenty twenty-seven.
The motion is by Counselor Fennessy, second by Counselor Van Sickle is their discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Thank you, counselors.
And item seven point three is the business of the Finance Committee with a meeting held on November fourteenth is their report from the committee.
Is there a vice chair for Finance? Counselor Elm, do you mind giving this report?
I, I have not, uh, prepared a statement, uh, other than we've approved these, uh, particular budgets that you see before us. Uh, so I, I'd have no further summary at the moment.
Okay, I'll, a couple of things here, counselors. I think we've got some recusals. So I'm gonna separate item recommendation number five, which is the health insurance fund budget. I'm not aware of any more that need recusals. Uh, and then item number ten, I'll come to that in a minute. That actually doesn't require council approval. Uh, we can still discuss it if you have questions, but, uh, uh, so I'll, I'll open that since it's on the agenda, but that, that's an administrative action. So in terms of the budgets, what Finance did more or less is they took one motion to adopt them all. So, uh, first what I will do is ask if there is a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-five health insurance fund budget.
Some moved.
The motion is by Counselor Moffett, the second by Counselor Elm. Uh, Counselor Van Sickle.
Just noting my recusal, thank you.
Counselor Van Sickle will recuse. Does anybody else need recusal on this? Okay, uh, any discussion on the health insurance fund budget? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries, and the record reflects Counselor Van Sickle's recusal. Uh, if it is your pleasure, I will entertain a motion to adopt the remainder of these budgets. Again, these are, uh, a series of usually smaller, usually simpler budgets. Some are more complex than others, some are larger than others. Uh, they, uh, they all do something for the city, but obviously you'll see that some of them can be dormant for, uh, a long time. So we can discuss them all in a single motion, uh, answer any questions in a single motion if you're interested. So is there a motion to adopt the remaining budgets? Uh, the motion is by Counselor Elm, second by Counselor Moffett. Any discussion on these remaining eight budgets? Hearing, sorry, just a reminder, this is part of our effort to, we're really racing to get, uh, all city budgets in a single budget book by the end of twenty twenty-four. It's gonna seem like such a small thing, you might not even notice if I wasn't telling you about it every single week, but, uh, it's a big deal. These budgets in previous years were often not even brought to the Finance Committee until the next year, until, until like January or February. So, uh, I want to compliment the Finance Department. They're, they're really working hard and racing to get these things completed, which is gonna get us on a much better rhythm for years to come. Okay. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. And the final item, uh, for approve sending the request, uh, for proposals for the Superior Public Museums Management Contract. I think that's just a mistake that I failed to catch on this agenda, so I apologize to the clerk's office on that. Uh, what this was a discussion about Superior Public Museums, uh, contract or a contract to manage the city-owned museums. Uh, the Finance Committee discussed and more or less, uh, asked to put this out to bid. Putting things out to bid is an administrative action because the action that the council takes is approving a contract. So our job is to just get things in front of you. Sometimes we go to committee where counselors are interested and say, hey, are there things you want to see changed in this? Uh, and that's what we did here. That's it. It's on the agenda. Does anybody have any questions? Any discussion? Uh, Counselor Fennessy.
The only question I had is on the, in the agenda packet, it's, uh, listed as a draft. Is that, were, do you know, were there any amendments to that, or is that the way it's gonna be going out?
Counselor Elm, Counselor Herrick, do you remember if we made any specific changes? It would have been only additions. We took nothing out.
Yeah, there was nothing taken out, so this would be approved as, as it shows in the draft.
But you don't remember any?
I recall that we made a motion to go out to RFP.
Right.
But we weren't, that was just a guideline, that we didn't actually approve that document, that we were just more or less approving that we're going out to RFP. So there was still room for making changes in the future is what I recall.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, so, uh, it is not out, and in fact, uh, I've heard some suggestions for change, technical changes, things that were mistakes that, uh, we fixed, I mean, an hour ago. So, uh, counselors, I think I'll hold it till the end of the week if folks want to review it, unless there are things you want to see changed now. Again, it's an adminis, so same as the Finance Committee, uh, because this is an action of, of the administration, it's actually of the, the contract analysts, even I rarely get involved in these, but the, uh, what I told the Finance Committee, you can add anything you want. I, I probably won't take anything out unless something is wrong and needs to be changed.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure the, for, for the timeline. The timeline is, is gonna be the same for the most part unless the contract analysis sees, uh, a need to make any minor changes. This is, the, the timeline's still gonna remain.
Yes, so we were, uh, we did discuss that quite a bit, uh, at Finance wherein this is, we keep calling it an RFP, but really what it is, is an invitation to the specific groups involved, uh, namely DCHS and SPM to make a presentation to the Finance Committee. They wanted to give them time to do that, as well as announce this to the world that we're hearing presentations. So in the event somebody else is out there and wants to present, I imagine the committee's gonna hear that, uh, those proposals. We're certainly gonna present it to them. The other thing that I mentioned is I would at least draw up a proposal for city management on behalf of the administration. I also told them that it's not something I'm gonna recommend as the, as, you know, you should do this city council. I'm gonna put them in a position to do that if that is, if that's the will of the committee and the council.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions or discussion on that? Okay, we will move on then to the, the, uh, the other reports. So I'm turning this back to the clerk.
All right, item one point one point one is the business of the Communications and Information Technology Committee with a meeting held on November seventh is their report from the chair.
All right, this is a report I did prepare for. Uh, so the November seventh CIT committee meeting, there is just key initiatives that were discussed to enhance the superior fiber infrastructure and the services regarding Connect Superior. The committee had approved a contract with MyTech for a low-level design for the Connect Superior Fiber Expansion. The proposal of the scope included a hundred seventy miles of engineering with a thorough understanding of Superior's geographic impairment requirements. The plan prioritizes underground installations to minimize aesthetic impacts and maintain reliability with the flexibility of aerial instruct installations when required. The committee also recommended Hanco Utilities for a two-year contract for maintaining the Connect Superior Network and installing customer drops to the homes or businesses. Hanco, who is already familiar with the city's network, offered competitive pricing and rapid response capabilities. Their, their responsibilities include site surveys, drop installations, in-home equipment setup, and Hanco's approach to clustering installations with neighborhoods is expected to streamline the process improve and improve efficiency. The committee also recommended a contract with E Plus to implement the business network operating support software for the Connect Superior Network. E Plus is a financially strong and growing company, ensuring they're gonna be around for the long term. Their redundant systems work seamlessly with the Nokia equipment that we'll be using. They'll provide, install, and integrate all necessary hardware and software, as well as site surveys and configuration of the network. They will also provide testing and operator training. In another business, the committee also recommended adopting JustFOIA. This is software that's going to be addressing the growing number of public record requests. The platform will streamline request processing with features like automated redaction of sensitive information, predictive text to guide users, and online payment capabilities. The system is designed to improve transparency and efficiency while reducing manual workload for the city's clerk office and the police department. The software includes cloud data storage and custom configurations, offering flexibility to each, each department's needs, and that's my report.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll ask the clerk to take us through the recommendations.
Um, item one is to approve the purchase of JustFOIA at the cost of eleven thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars, which includes the annual subscription and implementation, training and support with a five percent annual increase starting in year two, to satisfy the need for tracking, compliance, and retention of public record requests received under the Wisconsin Public Records Law.
Motion by Counselor Elm, second by Counselor Ludwig. Is there a discussion? Counselor Fennessy.
Uh, just a, just a quick question on this one. So the, in, in listening to the, the, the meeting that went on, they, they indicated that in the past there had been, on average, like a hundred, um, open records requests, and this year we're at already four hundred and fifty or something like that. Does, do we have any, any indication or reason what the, the sort, I, I think the software is, is fantastic just to streamline the whole, the whole process, but do we have any indication what the, what's causing the, the surge in requests?
Uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, Captain Herrman, I think, right, to discuss something. I'd at least, uh, talk about that from the police side. From the administrative side, I don't know about a four times increase. Uh, I haven't felt a quadrupling of records requests, but there, there's definitely more throughout the administration. My office probably gets one a week or multiple a week now, where it used to be every other month. Uh, so we, we are seeing more, but, uh, Captain, if you could approach the mic, please. Captain, if you could approach the mic.
The police department, on average, has been receiving anywhere between two hundred and two hundred and fifty over the last four to five years. This year, we've seen a dramatic uptick. A lot of it has to do with just social media, um, hot button topics. If we have a incident that could garner a little bit more attention, we'll have multiple requests for the same information. Uh, I just think with today's climate and transparency, more people are becoming accustomed to wanting to see body cam footage of traffic stops, of interactions with the police. So I think just the more that it's out there, people are aware that I can actually obtain that now, and this is how I obtain it, by calling the police department or show up, showing up in person. With the online system, it just makes it more streamlined, able to be viewed by everyone. Simple request, people are familiar with using the systems. It can be right on the city's website, right on the police department's website.
Okay, yeah, thank, thank you. The, uh, I, I think this, the software is fan- fantastic. It, it, one of the, one of the things that was talked about in the, uh, in the meeting is the ability to just put like a, like a link on the city website. Is that, is that something that we're gonna be looking at doing where somebody could just go online to like the city website and fill out a, a request them, themselves?
Uh, it's not some, uh, I'm not super familiar with the software yet, but I, I can pretty easily say yes. We're gonna want, uh, especially if that's gonna be one of the more common ways folks engage with us, uh, we're gonna wanna give them a chance to hit that before they just start dropping emails to everybody. It's gonna save them quite a bit of time. It says, there's always competition for what's on the front of the website, but, uh, this, these days feels pretty important.
Right, yeah, I mean, I, I don't even care if it's on the, like, the, the front of the website, but just, just have it easy, easy access, I think is important. Thank you.
And I, I could just follow up with that. Uh, there, there was a, there's a link that I could send you that was of another city that has it set up, and when you go to the page, you can either choose the police department or the city side, and that, that's the whole point, is to go to the site and you can see previous requests and pull that information up. So that was my understanding. It's definitely going on the city's website.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item two is to award the Connect Superior Fiber Engineering Phase Two contract to MyTech in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-six cents.
Motion is by Counselor Elm, second by Counselor Ludwig. Is there a discussion? Counselor Fennessy.
Me again, sorry. Um, this one is for, for phase two, is the way it's, it's, it's outlined. Can, can we get, uh, kinda like an outline of what phase two is?
Uh, yeah, Ms. Becking.
So at this time, phase two is the whole city. So this allows engineering for the entire city, and within that, um, MyTech will be helping us to, um, bulk the different areas together to help make good decisions on how the next buildout should happen. But this, in, this contract will cover engineering the entire city and then helping to decide where is next.
Because previously, all we, all, all we engineered was for phase one for that nine hundred homes, whatever it was?
Exactly, yep. So that was phase one, and when deciding what to call this, we had to call it something, but the intent was to get as much designed as we could, and with, uh, ARPA money that we still had left, and with, uh, um, abilities of the different engineering firms, this became a possibility that was something that was within the budget, and also allows us to have a lot of flexibility on deciding what is next without committing to what is next.
Okay, can you, can, can you help me understand the, the, the driver to engineer the entire city for, for broadcast? We don't know if this is gonna be wildly successful or wildly, uh, big failure. Um, so just kinda, kinda ta- talk me through why, why now to engineer the entire city when we don't know if these nine hundred homes that at least at, at this point have broadband through the street, um, if you will, we, we don't even know if that's gonna be successful.
When the original Hanco bids came in and we found we were so far under budget as to what actual construction costs were, brought that up with the mayor's office and, and was directed to start looking ahead, making plans of what could be next. So with that in mind, went with getting it, getting quotes for what it would cost to engineer the city so that we would have options in the future while still using ARPA money. So that was a big factor in why looking ahead to this made a, made good sense and was a good use of funds. It lets us really get ahead to decide where we would like to go next. Once those take rates come in at what we're anticipating, once we're seeing more and more of who wants to be on the network, gives us a lot more flexibility to move forward instead of being behind. And that in utilities, in telico, and all of those things, being behind is an unpleasant place to be. We want to be ready to be able to take a next step forward, and with engineering the entire city, we're gonna be able to choose where we take that next, next step, not just the convenient one, not just the one that fits within the budget, but the one that makes the most sense for what we need to do next.
I also have Director Reinhardt trying to answer the question.
My answer's gonna be a little more short on this. Um, basically, the ARPA funding is, you know, it's money we had to have obligated, um, at this point, so we're at a time constraint with that. Uh, the money needs to be spent, and not only one of two ways, uh, broadband meets a spending category requirement, which we have to hit, and it meets the twenty twenty-four deadline. So, um, it was part of the budgeted ARPA fund already, and this was a good way to keep that project moving as well.
And so if, oh, sorry, did you, did you?
Yeah, my answer's even shorter. It's cheaper to buy in bulk. It's, uh, it, we paid to engineer phase one. To engineer each individual neighborhood separately would cost much more money than to just do the whole thing at once.
Do we know how much phase one is? I, I, I don't. I'm putting you on the spot. I.
Uh, I don't. I don't remember how much it costs. That, that was the conversation that we had. Uh, we would save money by just doing it, hiring one firm, doing the whole thing at once.
Right. Who did phase one? Was that Magellan?
I do have that number. So the original phase one engineering was two hundred and forty thousand dollars, plus all of the different things that we had with EnTrust as they were helping us with our RFPs, as they were helping us get our systems ready, but that's a big thing to look at now. Our systems are already in progress. We're not looking at having MyTech do, um, RFP work with us. We're not looking for that level of assistance anymore. We're looking to get, get the city engineered, and that's what they specialize in.
Right. If, i- if we move forward with this and we engineer the entire city, and we've got every single drop point, you know, all the trees, you know, all, all of that, that would be needed to, to fiber the entire city. If this doesn't move past phase one, does this hold any value for any other use within the city, or, or not really?
That's an awesome question. I could see other uses for it, honestly, having those tree studies done, having more understanding where all of the right of ways are, have a more complete understanding of where any private areas might be held. Um, it makes a very complete and excellent study of every neighborhood that we go into with fiber, and when we go and make the, make the plans for it. So I guess if you're looking at a, a rotten scenario, you know, as a, as a, as a, um, worst case, but best case, we're going to be having fiber into all of the different neighborhoods relatively quickly, which is really exciting because, uh, in the different ways that I've talked to the, um, MyTech team and their, uh, references and resources, it's what they do, and they do a great job with it, and so very excited to work with them.
Depending on when the decision was made, you could sell it too. So it, it's gonna be very fresh, very current. Uh, so if, if we just abandon this after phase one, I, I'm not gonna pretend that we would get seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars back, but it's got value. It's, it's something that's very expensive, involved, and takes, uh, technical expertise to do. So you could sell it to another developer.
Sure. So some of the. So some of the, some of the things that you're saying, like the right of way and all that, are we lacking that currently, right now?
I think there's always, in a city of our size, there's always opportunity to keep refining our maps, to keep on looking at things, just to keep looking. I mean, there's always gonna be surprises in a city this size, and that's not to make a dig at anybody even slightly because we know how hard all of our public works in planning and everyone works. It's like, there's just always a surprise that a little bit more detailed review can find.
Sorry, Councilor, I didn't understand that question. Can you ask?
One of the, when I asked if there was, you know, if there's value outside of this, this project, if it doesn't move on from Phase One, you know, she indicated we would have a better understanding of like, you know, right of ways, trees, you know, all that. And I just wondered if we've, if we're limited in that right now, probably a separate, separate conversation, but...
In my opinion, I work a bit more broadly than, than Steph Becken, but I, that is certainly something that comes up. It's not something I considered in terms of why this has value. Obviously, I wanted the entire city designed for broadband network, but we run into that stuff all the time. Now granted, tight, older neighborhoods, you know, we know where most of that stuff is, but there's a bunch of times where we have no, we don't have a clear understanding of where the right of way is. We put kind of a lot of work into trying to start a tree inventory a few years ago. I'm not sure if this adds to that, but, so those kinda things, like what's going on in the city, those are often mysteries that do take some investigation.
Sure, thank you. And then the last, last question I had is in the, I don't remember if it was in the bid packet or whatever. It mentions that Phase Two will begin in 2025?
It's when we're asking for it to be engineered. So we're asking it to, we're asking to have the final engineering done, I believe, at the end of June of 2025. That does not necessarily mean that we are ready to take that next step. This does not include like construction oversight or things like that, that you would sometimes see in an engineering sort of situation. And it was intentional because that next choice is going to be a bigger decision. But this will allow us to have a lot of information to make that decision really well and really informed.
Construction of a new neighborhood in 2025 would surprise me, and I've usually been one of the most aggressive people in the room in those conversations.
All right, thanks for the information, Stephanie.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the contract with Mitec in the amount of $756,183.96, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item three is to award Connect Superior Maintenance and Drop Contract to Hancock Utilities based on unit cost in the proposal for an estimated two-year amount of $1,61,877.34.
Motion is by Councilor Elm, second by Councilor Ludwig, is their discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
And number four is to award the Fiber Business Network and Operating Support Software Contract to E+ in the amount of $158,925.68.
Motion is by Councilor Elm, second by Councilor Ludwig, is their discussion? Council fantasy.
Just one more question on this one. We just purchased the software, I don't know if it was a month ago or so. Just wondering what the difference between those are.
Ms. Beck.
Good question, there's a lot that goes into a fiber network. So the ones that you guys have looked at already are a few different things. So if you looked at our operating system, that is our COS system, that is like our business model that allows people to purchase products and work within that marketplace. We've seen a Nokia bid that came through, and that is our heavy duty, that's our servers, that's our big connection pieces that actually shoots the light out to the fiber. This piece is our, it's also a business side of it. So this is the part that lets us run, it's called Altaplano, and Altaplano is a provisioning system. So this one, unfortunately, we couldn't get through Nokia directly, so we did have to go through a different VAR, value-added reseller. So that is why you're seeing it in a different way. I would have preferred to have it just all in one, but they did not sell exactly the right equipment that we needed. So this one does a slightly different job. It will also be up in the penthouse, it's physical equipment, and there's some provisioning thing that makes sure that the, all the systems talk to each other.
So this is the software more for the, for the hardware, where the other software that we purchased is for the, kinda the user?
Consumer, yep.
Okay.
Yep, for the consumer and the ISPs, yep.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
New Business, item 10.1, I am recommending approval of miscellaneous licenses.
I'm sorry, do we have reports sans 8.2?
All right, 8.2, I'm sorry, is reports without recommendations. At this time, are there any further committee or commission reports to be made?
Hearing none, we may now move to New Business.
Thanks. So that 10.1 is approval of miscellaneous licenses.
Motion is by Councilor Ludwig, second by Councilor Herrick, is their discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
10.2, I am recommending approval of a temporary Class B beer and temporary Class B wine license application for Superior Public Museums Holiday Sampler Event located at 906 Second Street to be held on December 5th.
Motion is by Councilor Moffett, second by Councilor Fantasy, is their discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 10.3, broadband manager Becken recommends awarding the Connect Superior Fiber Conduit Installation to Stack Bros. in the amount of $58,000.
Motion is by Councilor Elm, second by Councilor Grasky. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 10.4, Planning Economic Development and Port...
I'm sorry, Councilor, Director Cirque has asked me with apologies to flip items 10.4 and 10.5. We should consider the development agreement first because failure of the development agreement renders the other resolution moot. So is there objection to taking up item 10.5 now?
Hearing none, last clerk to read 10.5.
It is the recommendation to approve, for the approval of a development agreement between the City of Superior and Dottie Dew LLC with the intention of assisting in the redevelopment of 1315 Ogden Avenue with Superior Craft School.
Motion is by Council Fantasy, second by Councilor Elm. Members of the Craft School are here, they're prepared to make a presentation that is not on the agenda, so you have to authorize it at this point. I'm, I'm not willing to give them more than 10 minutes, which I know is going to be challenging, unless you absolutely insist they should have more than 10 minutes. Do you want a presentation, or do you want to ask them questions or discuss this immediately? What's your pleasure? Somebody shout something else.
Did they have a presentation? Yeah, they have.
Okay. If there is no objection, I will invite them to give a presentation for 10 minutes. This is, this is not a hope situation, Mr. Dorfman. It's 10 minutes.
I have a gift to gab. Oh, you got it, okay. Well, thanks for having us here tonight. Thank you, Mayor Jason.
Just a minute, Mr. Dorfman.
Pardon?
Make sure the presentation...
Thank you. My name is Jeff Dorfman, I was born and raised in Superior. I raised my five children in this community, and I built a successful career as a business owner right here in Superior. Tonight, I come to share with you a dream I had for over 10 years, and now I'm hoping to deliver that project to our community. What is a craft school? A craft school is also, can be called a folk school. They create a unique learning environment for people of all ages and skill levels that can develop new skills. In addition to teaching technical skills, craft schools emphasize creativity, innovation, cultural preservation, passing down skills that might otherwise fade. These schools are growing in popularity. Over 60 active folk and craft schools nationwide, with many established just in the last two decades. I believe the oldest school in the country is, dates back to 1925, and that would be the J.C. Campbell School in North Carolina. They were initially inspired by Scandinavian models. American folk schools have adapted to include various crafts, music, skills rooted in traditionals, in traditions tied to their area. Craft schools create community, and I might add, there's just nothing negative about a craft school or a folk school. The, probably the closest successful school to us is the North House Folk School in Grand Marais. They opened over 25 years ago. They employ approximately 20 professional staff and interns, plus they employ countless artists and artisans that come to their community to teach their classes. Their annual budget currently is about $2.5 million. They offer a number of programs with their community, neighbors in mind, craft nights, open studios, concerts, and more are offered at different times throughout the year. The folk schools also support local economies by drawing students who spend on accommodation, food, and local attractions. Conservatively, the North House School, their annual economic impact in Grand Marais is about $3.5 million to $5.3 million annually. Craft schools open opportunity, and we can do this in Superior. The Superior Craft School, after three years of extensive planning, writing a business plan, working with the Entrepreneur Fund, doing research of other schools, we're at a point now where we have our Board of Directors established. We have a building purchased, which is 1315 Ogden. If you currently don't know what that is, that would have been recently the old Ram Truck Chrysler showroom building. It's about a 13,000 square foot building. We have our construction loan approved, and tonight I'm asking you to support the, the mayor's suggestion that, or what we asked for help. And we are at a point where we truly need this gap funding and so we can move forward with the construction of, of the building, which will house the folk school and a coffee shop. Down on the 1300 block of Ogden Avenue, two years ago, you had four empty large buildings. Today, PNR, they've occupied one building, they've built that out, and they have their corporate headquarters there. The next building, my wife and I purchased, and this Saturday, we'll be having an open house for the first bike and ski shop and boutique here in Superior, Outdoor North. Next door, Mavel Concrete is now occupying the old Capus Erickson dealership. And this would be the last building on that block that would, needs to be developed, and it's a great addition to downtown. And it, just the construction impact between building out not only the craft school, but also Outdoor North, and then the businesses involved here, we would be in the neighborhood of about $3.5 million investment just on that one block in downtown. So it's a major investment. As I mentioned, also in the building with the craft school, there'll be a coffee shop called The Meeting Grounds. And again, the school is a catalyst for other businesses. I wouldn't have done the bike shop if I didn't firmly believe that we could also do a folk school. And by the way, I wanna mention, the folk school is a, is a nonprofit. I will, I do not own it, and like I earlier said, we do have a Board of Directors. And it will be a catalyst, hopefully, for, we will have the space for an additional one to two businesses in the main building with the school and the coffee shop. The school will encompass various classrooms. We will have a teaching kitchen. A teaching kitchen is not a commercial kitchen. It is, we will be licensed to create food, and what that means is we can't retail the food. Any food that's produced in that kitchen has to either be eaten there or taken home. It's not like the coffee shop can run over and use the kitchen and produce something and retail it. It's, it's not licensed for that. We won't have the equipment, that type of equipment, to do commercial resale. But you'll be able to take classes in baking, in various types of cooking. We will have children's programs for art. We'll have various classes for adults in art, poetry, jewelry making, photography, videography, just about woodworking. The Lake Superior Woodturning Guild is going to be, their head, their clubhouse will be in that building. They currently have approximately 50 members. They wanna call it home. The, the, the impact of the school, we hope in our community, by bringing people not, you know, from outside the community to, to take classes, will, they have to use our, our service industries, our hotels, our restaurants. And hopefully, they like our community, and I, when I say community, I think of Duluth Superior as our community. And hopefully, people that have never been up here, if they come to take a class, that they'll come back again and vacation in our area. We'll have a woodworking shop, we'll offer woodworking. And woodworking can be anything from furniture making, carving, timber frame skills. And we also wanna, hopefully, it'll be a catalyst to have, to having downtown events. We hope to have a, at some point, have a holiday craft market, hopefully, street dances. You know, it, again, we, we hope that just having a folk school in our community will, will be a, a place where, where people will wanna congregate, and that is our, our hope. And the what's unique to us is we have Lake Superior, we have Scandinavian heritage, we have municipal forests, we have partnerships, community-driven, assessable and mindful of differences and backgrounds, especially for traditionally marginalized communities. We create community, we open opportunity.
So one more minute, sir.
One more minute, okay. Well, why don't I, does anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask about a folk school?
Questions from the council? Or Mr. Dorf, Council Herrick?
Yeah, just one quick question, how are you gonna promote this, this new school? Do you have plans for that yet?
Yeah, well, we'll promote it, we'll market it like you'd market any other business. A nonprofit is a business. We will, we will market it, you know, online. We will, we will build through time, email catalog of people, we will send out, hopefully, a couple times a year, our class schedule and the offerings that we have. But yeah, we'll have a website. And to be honest with you, the National Folk School Association, we're already on their radar. They came to Superior last year and visited the building. How they found out about us, I have no idea, but they were on their radar already, and they're, they're based in the state of Washington. So they're excited for us.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Council Grasky.
Hello, thank you for being here.
Yeah.
How many jobs do you think this will provide, allowing this agreement?
Well, it, it, permanent full-time positions initially, probably, probably just starting out in the first year, will probably be anywhere between five and eight positions. But all the instructors are 1099 employees. They're, we, you know, we could easily have 150 different instructors coming in, depending on what our class... coming in, depending on what our class offering is throughout the year. And some of them will be local, regional, some of them be national, and some are even international. You've got craftspeople from Europe that tend to go on tour in the, in the summertime, and they will look for schools to try to book their classes. And, and that's one way we can team up with the North House School, is maybe offering classes together, where we would have an instructor one week and they'd have it the next, but we could split the travel expense, you know, between our two schools. Interestingly, the North House School helped me when I got stumped writing the business plan, and they don't, they don't see other folk schools as competition. They see it as growing, you know, the, the need for schools and the desire for people to learn crafts. And, and it, you know, when you take a class, it's not pass or fail, and you're not graded, it's, you're there to learn and to, you know, have the appreciation for the class that you're taking, and because you're paying for it. But it's, there's, everybody has the ability to be creative, and, and sometimes people just have to have the nerve to take a step forward and, and, and take a chance and learn a skill set.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a, I'm a big believer in all boats rise with a high tide, so I appreciate you saying that. Just to give me an idea of the building, what at capacity then would, so you had an instructor and you had a larger class? I'm just kind of trying to understand how that would sit in the whole vicinity.
Like in woodturning, generally speaking, instructors don't want to exceed eight students. The, the Woodturning Guild that will be housed there, they, they currently have seven or eight lathes, and then the instructor would use one. In a woodworking class, you might have ten to twelve people. In an art class, you might have up to twenty people. In a cooking class, I'm, I guess, eight to twelve, probably, depending what it's, the cooking class is, or baking class. It, so it, I guess it, it varies on the type of, you know, class that's being taught.
Yeah, it sounds concise, you know, intimate, really focused on the actual art itself, so I, thank you for that, appreciate it.
Councilor El.
Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Dorfman, and also the, the vision to put this into Superior. You know, it's, it's quite incredible and an awesome idea, and look forward to this, this happening. But on the city admin side of things, have, has there been any, I know the, the actual business is not in operation yet, but have we seen like a projected budget, or have we seen the business plan, like some of the technical aspects that aren't in the agenda packet? I don't know if Mr. Cirque could, or anyone else?
Mr. Cirque can probably add, but that's not typically what we ask for in development agreement. We put some clawbacks in that, that require the business to, for example, stay in operation for a certain amount of time, that's, that's in the agreement. Typically, an economic development agreement is really just a leap of faith. This is, this is not structured differently from any of our other development agreements. So usually, you know, we're building housing projects, or things in tids. The, the biggest difference here is there's not a kind of self-generating pot of revenue like a tax income district, or a land sale out of racks. This is from the Economic Development Fund, which we haven't done in a while, but it is, there's a, there's a budgeted expense there for incentives, where we just say, there might be a cool project that comes along that, that needs a lift, otherwise it won't happen. And so that's, that's part of the purpose of the Economic Development Fund. So we don't typically ask for the business to perform any particular way, in this case, because there's nothing for us to recapture, this is a grant.
Absolutely. I, I think it fits those qualifications, just making sure we're doing as much due diligence as we can, but certainly look forward to what this can be. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilor Finacy.
Hey, Jeff, this is, this is fun to see us at this, at this point, because I know you've been, you've been working on this for.
Yeah, we've talked, yeah.
The, what, what struck me during the, during the presentation, you've got, you know, like some cooking where it may be a casual Wednesday night that, yeah, you learn how to cook a specific dish, or maybe an art class on a casual, you know, Wednesday where you learn how to, you know, do whatever. Then you also talked about, like, timber frame construction. That's not, that's not just like, I'm going to learn this on a Wednesday.
It's learning the fundamentals of, of timber framing, you know, the, the joints, mortise and tenon joinery. You know, we can, we don't have to put up a structure to teach the, the, I wouldn't be teaching that class, because I don't specialize in timber framing. But yeah, you, you, I think the North House School, they offer a class where you build a, an oversized sawhorse, but all the joinery is, is the joinery that you would use in timber framing. And then they would teach the fundamentals of a, of the construction of maybe a shed built in timber frame. And they're popular classes, because, you know, everybody has, you know, this vision that they, that they, I think a lot of people would like to take on a project like that, or build a shed, but do it traditionally with just joinery and not using mechanical fasteners. So we can do it in a small scale in the wood shop and teach those fundamentals, you know.
So, so all of the, like, the whole, like, all of these, the, the idea is for, like, like, short bits of information and, you know, short bits of, like, education. It's not like, you know, every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, we're gonna, we're gonna do this a much larger project. It's more just giving them the, the skill set to then, you know, kind of.
Yeah, it might be a three-day class. If you build a, maybe a small shed, that might be a seven-day class, you know. And I might add that instructors who are well-known nationally or internationally, they draw people from a regional area. Like, for instance, I took a three-day carving class up at the North House School a year and a half ago, from a lady who's a world-class wood carver. And she's well-known, and she was up there for two, three-day classes. Well, in the class that I was in, there was ten students. Five were from Minneapolis. There was an eighty-four-year-old lady who drove herself up from Eau Claire to, and that's, that's quite a hike, from Eau Claire to Grand Murray. I was from Superior, there was a guy from Duluth, and there was a lady that works at the school that was taking the class. So they, everybody was coming from outside the community, and, and again, we had to rent rooms in a hotel, we had to use the restaurants, and then there's gift shops, and, you know, you can't leave Grand Murray without purchasing something. And it, you know, and so hopefully, we can get that same response here in Superior, and I think we have a lot to offer, and I think our downtown, this would be a great fit for the downtown. The mayor certainly loved the idea when I first presented it to him two and a half years ago. I mean, this has really been a, a long project, you know, and, and, and he's been very supportive, and, and I hope you guys are also, because I think our community, there, there's no downside to it. There's no negative. It's all about being, about a community and being creative, you know, it's just, and, and being a, a safe place to go, and hopefully, our kids, you know, the programs we offer, you know, our doors will be open seven days a week. I mean, we, we won't turn anybody away, you know.
Right, but thanks for not giving up during this.
Yeah, it's been a trying, you know, yeah, in the world, finance economy, it's just, it's been, yeah, a little challenging, but we're, we're making headway now, and we've got it financed, you know, we, this is just the last step. So I appreciate your support. And, by the way, don't forget Outdoor North on Saturday, noon, we're having our grand opening. I just thought I, as long as I had you guys in front of me, I would mention that, so.
Any further questions? Councilor Van Sickle.
I also just wanted to say, say thanks for the presentation, and one of the first things I thought of with this space is just, you know, make kids without a garage, or a place to learn how to just maybe work on small engine, engines and stuff like that, and just really looking forward to seeing this, open up that space, so, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Further questions? Councilor Ludwig.
I just want to add, I'm kind of, I'm excited about this. I had a nephew that went to the North House School years ago to learn blacksmithing, and at that time.
Yeah.
I thought, oh my gosh, this would be so cool to have one of these schools here in Superior. And I'm from the gardening community, and so to have a kitchen, maybe, you know, teaching people how to can, how to freeze, how to preserve their produce, and so, you know, it's really exciting, and.
We will have all that, yeah.
So, so, yeah, so thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Thank you, Mr. Dorfman, last call for discussion. The question is on adoption of the development agreement. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Congratulations, sir. Ten point four.
Ten point four, Planning Economic Development and Port Director Cirque recommends approval of a resolution authorizing the submittal of a Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Initiative Grant application to assist in the redevelopment of thirteen fifteen Ogden Avenue with the future location of the Superior Craft School.
Motion is by Councilor Elm, second by Councilor Finacy. Just a reminder, councilors, this is the second part of the craft school, obviously. These WDC grants the city is the pass-through, so we are the applicant for a state grant, which we then give to this private nonprofit. We try to do about one of these a year. This one is obviously very exciting. The next one is probably going to be pretty exciting, too, so try and pin me down on that later. Discussion, Councilor Grasky.
I just have a quick question for clarification. So does this application, is this application written by the, I guess, business to me?
It's largely written by us, so obviously with a, a lot of coordination with the recipient. This is a, and Director Cirque, and the, oh, there's, nods probably would have worked, but generally, we are the applicant for this grant. We apply for it on behalf of a recipient, so obviously, we need all of their information, but what am I missing from the process?
Nothing at all, you know, we've been very successful with this. Essentially, WDC has kind of changed their process, where now they actually take a pre-application, which kind of gets approved initially, and then all the information kind of follows. So essentially, what you're doing is saying, hey, the city can participate in this, and we'll walk through the process. It's a little bit computer-intensive, performance reporting, things like that, but we work very closely with the developers. We've done them for Cobblestone, Earth Rider, Empire Block, so we've been pretty successful in doing this, so maybe you didn't miss anything.
Now, pre-application is, that's why I know what the next one is.
Okay, I mean, so the narrative is written by the business, and then we take that under?
It's both of us, yeah.
Okay, so do we vet that, too? Like, do we go through that narrative as well, to make sure that things are, I don't know, like, an address is accurate, or anything like that?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, there's a, there's a, there's a budget and all that kind of stuff, Councilor Grasky, that goes with this. It's a pretty extensive application.
Okay.
So, and again, like I said, the performance reporting and the, the statements that we need to do quarterly are also part of that, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
They're largely, this, WDC is largely adopting us as a tiny little state agency to, to do the vetting on their behalf, so we're, we're the applicant to make sure that, you know, it's a legitimate nonprofit or business, that it, that yes, it's all accurate, and we're endorsing it. We're, we're saying this is something that we want in the community, this, especially when it's one award a year, you, you want it to be pretty cool. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item ten point six, Councilor Moffett recommends approval of an ordinance amending City Code Chapter Two Administration, Article Two, Common Council, Section Two dash fifty-three, compensation for aldermen.
Councilor Moffett, do you want to introduce?
Yes, thank you. So have before you a paper copy in your spots for ordinance that was just read. There was one in your packet also that was just the generic language of the current ordinance. I'm recommending two changes, changing the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three to April twenty-first, twenty twenty-six, and changing the compensation from seven thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty-six cents to nine thousand dollars per calendar year paid monthly while holding office. And I, I have some comments, do you want me to go through those now, or, or should we?
If you want to take a few more minutes to introduce, make them up if you can.
Sure. We're at that time of the year where we can make an adjustment, and it, so this change, some important points about this. This does not increase our pay, or raising the pay for future city council members that will be elected in the next two elections. So none of the current elected seats will see this increase. We're discussing this now, so that future candidates will know what their pay is before they file for office, which begins soon. We're the only people that can raise the pay for the council. We cannot pass this off to HR committee, or the mayor, or staff members. This is the process for council pay that's been determined by the state. We recognize, as a council and as a city, the importance of fair pay. We have a responsible bidder ordinance, we provide regular increases for staff to recognize cost of living increases, et cetera. No number is perfect here. So just like school or work group projects, some people are doing more than others, whether they chair committees, they're doing extra research, attending professional training, putting out newsletters, regular meeting with the residents, constituent services. Council works, looks differently from person to person, that's always going to be the case. And I think, most importantly, that this does not dictate how future elected officials do their work. Voters control who holds the seats and takes, they probably take performance into mind and into account when they're choosing a council member for their, their district. So essentially, if a council member runs for reelection, the voters are going to decide if they're doing a good job or not, and that's the voter's right to make those choices. This number is not for right now. Inflation has been hitting hard for the last several years. We have another year and a half before this would take effect for the positions, because it would be for all future elected positions, not for any of our current seats. We can't project the cost of living increase, but we also should not expect that that is zero. The numbers, cost of living's been going up every year. This number has essentially no budget impact, and will not change any budget projections from what we looked at through the budgeting process. The, if this increase was any other item, it would not require council approval, because the cost is well below twenty-five thousand dollars. Low pay contributes to low participation in our process. Many of our elected positions go uncontested. I think this is unhealthy, and this, the, the low pay could be a contributing factor for some residents that might choose to serve. Low pay creates a privilege of serving that favors the wealthy retired or young people. Fair compensation allows for more diversity in many demographics, as well as opinions. Some potential candidates may rely on this increase to help cover missed hours at work, or for childcare during meetings. Some of our committee meetings meet during the workday, starting at four, four-thirty, or even at five o'clock, which all require many people to leave their jobs early, even if they work a regular nine-to-five job. So this isn't just about people who work evening hours or other things. And then also, I just want to talk about, this is skilled work that we're doing up here. Council members put a lot of work in, council members sit on several committees, must have a working knowledge of legal research, zoning, land use, budgeting practices, management principles, HR policies, public utilities, public speaking, and a variety of their specialized skills. People put work in here to learn how to do these jobs effectively, and I think that my colleagues have shown that, and, and people in the past have shown that, and I anticipate that whoever's holding these seats in the future will, will show that experience and that skill as well. And then finally, for those of you that are numbers people, that want to talk about number comparisons, I did a lot of research on what other communities are offering for their aldermen, and it's all over the place. It's from pretty close to zero to over thirty thousand dollars for positions that are designated to be more full-time, and literally everything in between. There's no patterns based on really community size. It seems very random on how often some communities revisit this. Many communities don't even post their council pay on the websites, or within their code on their website, so it was really hard to find a lot of them. But I do want to talk about how we can process these numbers. So the seven thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty-six cents, if you divide So the seven thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty-six cents, if you divide that by fifty-two weeks, it works out to one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents per week. If you were to divide that by the minimum wage, it would be for nineteen point one-six hours of work per week. If you were to divide it by, say, what an average low-cost employer in town might pay, like, there's a fast food restaurant across the street from me, they're advertising for seventeen dollars an hour. So if you take the one thirty-eight ninety-two divided by seventeen dollars per hour, that would be eight point one-seven hours of work per week. I don't know what everyone up here works. I'm assuming that it varies from week to week, and I'm assuming it varies from person to person, and what you feel like your time is worth to you probably also varies from time to, from person to person. If you take the seven thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty-six cents and divide it by the number of days, you get nineteen dollars and seventy-nine cents per day. So recognizing that you're maybe not working every day, perhaps, you know, on the weekend, on Sunday, you don't get emails and have to respond to things, or maybe you have a busy work week, and so one of the days you don't get a chance to do council work and the other days you're doing more, but that's your average is nineteen dollars and seventy-nine cents per day. I, I have, I had two meetings yesterday, and I have a meeting today, and I have four more meetings tomorrow for council, so that's like seven meetings this week. For some of us, we're not making minimum wage. And I'm not here because of the pay, like, I'm here because I want to serve my community, but we have to also recognize that it's creating a situation in which other people can't afford to do that, and we're maybe not getting as many candidates as we should. The nine thousand dollars is just a, a random, well, I shouldn't say it's a random number. It's a number that I picked that I thought represented a reasonable increase and for, for part-time work. It, it, it works out to about twenty-five percent increase, which seems like a lot all at once, but also recognizing that it's not for now, it's for in the future, and so that increase represents the next couple of years as well as what would have been now, and so. And the number is totally flexible, so I'm hoping my colleagues will be interested in discussing an increase and, so I'm, you know, I'm, the nine thousand dollars number is open for discussion and, and to be changed, but I, I really think that we should increase this number for future public officials, and I think this is reasonable for a part-time salary, so I'd like to make a motion to pass this ordinance change.
Motion is by Councilor Moffett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second is by Councilor Dean. A discussion on the motion. Councilor Elm.
Thanks, Councilor Moffett, for bringing this up. I don't think this is comfortable for any of us to be talking about, because I don't think any of us are doing this to get rich here. We're, we're here to serve the community and, and there are plenty of board members who volunteer and don't get paid anything across the community. Twenty-five percent seems like a lot. I'd probably be more inclined to go somewhere in between if we're looking for that. Calculating, I know that we've done budget increases for staff for anywhere from three to five percent. And looking at the change of date here from April eighteenth to twenty twenty-three to April twenty-first, twenty twenty-six, if we did like a three percent increase each year, looking forward into twenty twenty-six, I'd be closer to seventy-nine hundred. I'd be more inclined to something like that, showing a three percent increase each year to that point. I know predicting it into the future would be something to debate and discuss, but I'd be more comfortable with that number, but I, I thank you for the work. And I do know I looked at other communities and, and similar-sized cities get paid. There are some cities that get, they get compensated much less than us as well. So it's all over the place, like you said. Thanks for doing some of this uncomfortable work, I guess, because, like I said, none of us are doing this to get rich here. We're, we're here to serve. Thank you.
Further discussion. Councilor Fennessy.
Since, since Councilor Sweeney isn't here, I'll ask the, the classic Sweeney question about, I mean, you guys have kind of alluded to it, both you guys, about the other, what other cities our size pay. Do we have, is there, is there any data? I mean, because we can all, we can all certainly say that, you know, we're overworked and underpaid, which, you know, of course, the, if you, if you're looking at it from, you know, the pay for the, the hours that you put in and the, the effort that you put in and the sacrifices that you make, of course it, of course it isn't worth the seven thousand, it isn't, it isn't worth the nine thousand dollars either, but none of us are doing it for, you know, for, for the money. And so I, I would want to make sure that if, if we're looking at any future rate increase for, you know, for the future council that would, you know, start in twenty twenty-six, that, that we're, we're not just pulling this number out of, out of nowhere, because I think the, last I, last I heard, the, you know, Duluth makes, their, their city councilors make a little bit more than us, not a whole lot more. I think the Douglas County Board of Supervisors make about the same as we do. And so I, I want to ma, I would want to make sure that if we're gonna do any kind of a, you know, in an increase, that it's, that it's justified, not just, I feel that, you know, that we should, we, we should make more money. So I, I'd be, I, I would almost rather see us do, do a little more, you know, digging as, as far as what other municipalities pay to make sure that it's, that it's warranted based on other communities. But the, the question I had, Councilor Moffett, if you could clarify, there was something you, you mentioned when you were introducing this about it wouldn't need council approval because it's under twenty-five thousand? Or did I completely mishear something?
I, I was saying if this was a different budget item, then it wouldn't require approval. This is here because it does definitely require approval. This is the only way that salary can, increase can happen. Yeah, so I, I do have numbers from some other communities.
Just a second, Councilor Moffett. Councilor Fennessy still has a floor.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll give the, you know, the floor back to you. I thi, I think the, the only, I guess the biggest thing that resonated with me with, with what you're saying is the lack of contested races that we have. There is very, very few times that, that we have a contested race, and I, I don't think that that's, that that's healthy. I don't know if it's the, if it's the pay that's the biggest barrier or if it's the, if it's the actual work. But if, i- if something like this would, would spur more people getting involved, it, I, I think that would be a win for, you know, for, for the community, a win for democracy, and, you know, I, I, I would love to see more, more contested races. I think that, I think that makes for a healthy, a healthy council.
Further discussion. Councilor Fennessy.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilor Moffett. I guess I have a lot of hesitation on the policy, but largely regarding process, the Finance Committee did not make a recommendation and did not make a recommendation in support. And I think the other point here is that the, the number, while, well-researched, is not vetted. So I, I'm not in support of this policy. It just, there was, there's been nothing in, in the budget to speak of wage increases anywhere. And again, without, without a recommendation on the numbers from the Finance Committee, I was in Finance the other night, and there were still a lot of questions, and again, not, not a recommendation in support. So that being said, I will not support the resolution. Thank you.
Further discussion. Councilor Grasky.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to echo Councilor Fennessy a little bit, too, and Councilor Fennessy as well. I think, you know, not having Sweeney here as well, I watched the Finance meeting and, and coming from his perspective or the Chair, you know, time is, we need time. I think time would make this, this decision along with, it just feels, I understand there's a deadline to this, but if we really want to make this important to the future of, of future councilors or to create healthy competitions, maybe make this job feel more secure and positive at times, I think we really need to take time with this subject. I don't want to see it go away. I want to make that clear. But I, I really can't support it at this time just due to the, the timeline, the measure, the, the lack of discussion, really no recommendation. But I, I do want to say that I appreciate you bringing this up because I think it's an important discussion, but at this time I can't support.
Further discussion. Councilor Moffett.
I guess I'd just like a little bit more clarity about what people are looking for. I have numbers for a number of other communities. I'm not sure they're necessarily relevant, because they, they show what other elected officials have been willing to pass in their communities. Many of these numbers haven't been adjusted for a number of years. They don't show what we're experiencing in our community. If we posted for a salaried position for the city for X amount of dollars and we got one candidate, we might kind of wonder, like, while we've been posting this in the normal places, maybe the salary's not right, maybe the job description's off, but we'd take a look at those things. We can't adjust the job description here. What we can adjust is the salary, and I think a lot of people are maybe just not willing to do this job, and it could be for a variety of factors. But I think this is an opportunity where our community can lead and not follow other communities. Because, just because a lot of other communities are failing to address this issue, and they also have uncontested seats, and they also have bad pay, that's not an example I want to follow. We, we, we work to provide fair bidder ordinances in our, in our community, and we work to get our staff an increase when we can in our budgeting process, recognizing that cost of living goes up, and so I'm not sure how we can say that those things are important but that the work that we do here is unimportant. And I think we create an advantage for people that are willing to sacrifice more than others or can afford to sacrifice more than others, and then we lose out on, on candidate options. And so, like, this isn't an area where I want to follow other communities. I, I want to lead. And so when we, like, talk about budget numbers, we can, like, I, I went through a bunch of the numbers where we're talking about what the pay is. It's, it's nineteen dollars and seventy-nine cents a day. And, and that's what the, what the pay is. And so I, I think we can evaluate based on the amount of work we put in, is that fair pay for, for what's being done? And the, or the one thirty-eight ninety-two per week. And so what other communities are paying doesn't necessarily matter because those people aren't going to be running for our city council seats. And I, I think they're also doing a really poor job of managing this because just like people have mentioned here, this is really awkward to bring up. But also, we have to take ourselves out of it because we don't get these raises. Everyone here is going to finish out their term, and they're not going to see any of this money. So it's not about us. It's about doing what's best for our community. And so, you know, I, I'd be happy to go through those numbers again and talk about what that pay looks like for people. I, I just don't know how relevant the pay is for other communities because those people aren't going to move here and run for city council.
Councilor Johnson.
A couple of things. I mean, I can only speak to why I just chose to run it. I don't, I, to be quite honest, I didn't know this was a paid position until after I filed my paperwork, so. What was the last increase we had in twenty twenty-three? What was it prior to? I think there was, if I remember right, there was like a two-stage increase, like the odds got it and then the evens got it. Can you walk me through what that was before?
Probably not, but the, it, it was inconsistent, and then the most recent change helped it become more consistent in that it is one salary for everybody effective this date. And so similar to how this is, this ordinance proposal set up, it was one ordinance that, that two years in the future would set a salary. Before that, I think we had two different ordinances, one for the odd, one for the even, and you just hope that you remembered and that they wouldn't get out of sync, and that did happen. So it, it just didn't come up very frequently, but that's, and I don't remember what it was before.
And maybe the, maybe the way to solve this isn't a, hey, let's, the ten of us decide to give ourselves a raise, but maybe we put it into ordinance as a three percent or a cost of living raise or something like that. I just not, I'm not sure we're ready to, trying to read the room a little bit. I'm not sure we're ready to jump to, from, you know, seven thousand two hundred to nine thousand without a little bit more time and effort into looking at some other options. I appreciate Garner Moffett's dedication to this and creating the awkward conversation for all of us, so thank you for that. But I, I'll make a motion to send this back to Finance to answer some of the questions that we had and hopefully vet this a little bit more.
There's a motion to refer to the Finance Committee. Is there a second? The second is by, the motion is by Councilor Johnson, second by Councilor Fennessy to refer. Discussion on the question to refer. Councilor Fennessy.
Does this need to be approved before December first filing for new candidates?
It's my understanding.
You shaking your head? So if we, which is fine, I mean, if we, if we have to send it back to, so how would that, how would that play out?
The effect of the motion, barring a pretty quick rush by both Finance and the council to hold a special meeting prior to December first, and even then we're probably looking at posting deadlines, but the, the effect of the refer would, would effectively rule out this twenty twenty-six date, and then you're having a twenty twenty-seven conversation.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Moffett.
Just another question on that. I know, we, when we discussed this, we were trying to make sure that this was in place prior to the ability for a candidate to file, but I wonder if there could be room to wiggle a little bit if it was determined prior to the deadline for a candidate to withdraw?
So by statute, something like this would have to be approved before the first day upon which your city clerk's office would accept nomination papers for the, for the seat. And Patty has assured me that they would start accepting nomination papers on December first.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Question is whether to refer to the Finance Committee. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no? We have division. I'm going to have to call a roll call. Question is whether to refer to the Finance Committee. Yes refers to Finance Committee, no returns us to the main motion. One second. Please call the roll.
Councilor Herrick. Councilor Johnson.
Yes.
Councilor Grasky.
Yes.
Councilor La Dean. Councilor Fennessy. Councilor Moffett.
No.
Councilor Fennessy.
Yes.
Councilor Elm.
No.
And Councilor Ludwig.
Motion is six in favor, three against. The motion to refer carries.
Item ten point seven, Public Works Director Janigo recommends approving the purchase of parts and services to repair screening equipment for the main wastewater treatment plant in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars from Huber Technology.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Councilor Herrick, second by Councilor Elm. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item ten point eight, Public Works Director Janigo recommends approving, recommends awarding a contract to Short Elliott Hendrickson for design services for the Tower Avenue reconfiguration and pavement rehabilitation from North Twentieth Street to Bellknap Street in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion is by Councilor Elm, second by Councilor Ludwig. Is there discussion? Councilor Herrick.
Yeah, just one question. I think I did read it, but I just want...
I think I did read it, but I just want double verification on this, is that, I know, I think it was in twenty thirty-two, the state's planning on redoing the whole area, is that correct?
Yep.
And so these plans include putting meridians down the center now for safety, which is great. So will these plans coordinate with what the state wants to do in twenty thirty-two? In other words, once the meridians are put in, are they going to have to be replaced again during that time?
Oh, the answer to that question is no. The, the question you asked before, does this coordinate with the state's plans in thirty-two? Oh, I don't care. The state does have an obligation to do this. Part of the reason for doing it now is that they're just very delayed. We have significant traffic concerns approaching with the closing of Blotnick Bridge.
Right, right.
To say nothing of it, the street's not in bad condition, it's, it's long overdue for redesign. So this will, this will be a, this is design services, you're not approving the design, of course.
Right, right.
We're all going to have our ideas on that, but many of the improvements that we make when, when we do a project in partnership with the state, we're working together on that anyways, and the city is usually incurring pretty considerable cost on those projects for, for design style elements, like you mentioned.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mostly, what they're going to do, they're going to grind up pretty much everything we've done, relay all the concrete, and then pave over it. By twenty thirty-two, much of our work will have started to deteriorate.
All right, thanks.
Counselor Elm.
Just wanted to kind of clarify the public input aspect, and we just went through this public input process for Hammond Avenue. How, and how does this look different for this, if at all, for Tower Avenue, and what opportunities do citizens and businesses get to state their, their mindset of what this should be?
I expect it to be a better process, because the Public Works leadership has gotten better with pretty much every project, especially at this. When you're talking about street redesign, especially redesign in somebody's neighborhood, folks are really, really sensitive about that. And so the team Hammond Avenue, I mean, there were differences in their outreach between phase one and phase two. And the, the short version is you're going to see community meetings that anybody can go to, public surveys that anybody can contribute to, open-ended feedback, where folks are going to say what they think of it, all for inputting into the design, some door-to-door stuff with the actual people that live on the street. But of course, a lot of advertisements, so people can participate, because most of the folks that drive on it don't live on it. Then once you design it, and again, this is just about design, once you design it, then you do it all again to get feedback on, on what people think. And I think Councillors Ludwig and Moffett and a few others will tell you, I mean, Hammond Avenue, we were, we were tweaking that thing almost until the, the concrete trucks got out there. So public comment will be pretty aggressive, I hope, much even better than our previous projects.
Thank you.
Counselor Johnson.
Can you clarify when, I mean, you just laid out a pretty extensive plan for this. When, when are we looking at construction?
I hope next year. I'm not going to promise you twenty twenty-five, but I'm saying twenty twenty-five. Director Janigo, you want to throw a date out?
That's what we're shooting for, twenty twenty-five. If we start now, we did have all the survey done ahead of time, it was a, it was a small contract, so we've got all the survey work done. We can get the public engagement and get the, the drawing done, all the plans done, and be ready to go, depending on how the public engagement goes, and, and if we get everybody in agreement, we could have something on the street for bid to bid in May or June.
I'll mention this a few more times through this process, but I guess one of my main concerns is that we're, we're narrowing the focus of the traffic in a time that we're going to see a heavy increase in our traffic with the, with the closing of the Bong, Bong Bridge.
No, I don't think so. I don't think we're losing any traffic lanes, at least not in the designs that, that I've discussed. What you're losing is some of that, like, really long turn lane, that's what will get filled in. And so you still, you know, every block's going to be a little bit different, and again, this is a design process where everybody weighs in. This is not, nothing is decided here. We've thrown out some preliminary scope and ideas, but what, what you do with something where you've got, I think Todd calls it a twiddle, where the turn lane runs the entire length of the block, which is really dangerous, you've got traffic that's allowed to go in both directions, head to head in those things, it's unnecessary, nobody needs to turn in the middle of the block, and it widens the street and, and has a tendency to increase speed. When you put a median in, it's not a straight end-to-end median like we see on some streets. You still get breaks in the blocks and, and turn lanes and things like that.
So we're not going down to just one lane in each direction?
No, no. I, I haven't seen a design like that. We, not that we never talked about it.
I thought that was one of the things that I'd heard. So I, I, that was my main concern, is that we were going to be narrowing the flow of traffic, so, thank you.
I don't believe in this section, no.
Okay. Counselor Graski.
I was just going to add on to Counselor Johnson's. I think what, what I'm understanding is that when the Bong does go through, do repairs, that when that starts to kink up the bridge and how that's all acting in those areas, I would just, like, I'm not that it's not being considered, I think it's just something that we hear a lot from constituents about what is going on in that specific area. And I'm sure, you know, I'm sure you guys have a great plan, and everyone's going to be able to have a conversation about it. I just, I feel you, I just don't want it to get mixed up with Blotnick and all that stuff going on, so, thanks.
One final reminder, we don't have a plan. We have ideas. This is the, we're hiring somebody to make us a plan. That's, that's the question in front of you. So you all are now invited to the process of discussing a plan, during which I will be very opinionated.
Further discussion. Counselor Elm.
Back to the integration with the, the bridge, I'm assuming MinDOT, WISDOT's going to be involved with this process then, because obviously they are in discussions about Winter Street and other access points throughout the city, but this would be, are they, will they be involved with this process?
WISDOT has to be involved because of state highway, so we get certain improvement, there's, there's certain things, we could push this too far. If you make it a tiny little neighborhood street, they're, they're just not going to tolerate their, their state highway becoming that. Most of their interest tends to lie in terms of protecting the ability of freight to move through streets like this. We tend to resist that, nobody likes huge trucks rolling past their house. And, and then there's always the discussion of traffic. Two things, well, one thing I should say about Blotnick Bridge traffic, we want to be careful about designing a long-term street for a short-term traffic problem. The other thing I would say is, there is nothing you can do to this street or any other that is going to prevent the traffic problems you have coming when the Blotnick Bridge closes. So some things could make it a little bit better, a little bit worse, but on the whole, we're going to see an impact in traffic, especially in that first year. When you see major, major diversions like this, though, you, you tend to, especially when it's more than one season, you, you see that problem start to solve itself after the first year, is people just pick a better way. At some point, folks just don't like getting stuck in bumper-to-bumper traffic. The, my, the personal example for me, I was part of the planning for the highway, the I thirty-five design in Duluth, when the Mick did that years ago, you may even remember that, that whole highway was shut down for a couple of years, and there was no detour, there just wasn't, for an entire freeway in Duluth, and folks just figured it out. First year was a bummer, that was rough, but over time, people developed different routes and then, until the freeway reopened.
Certainly, that, that makes sense. And obviously, I mean, this could be viewed as we're making this change now, but then in twenty thirty-two, then maybe some more permanent changes could be made as well. So obviously, we're just starting the planning discussion, so I just want to make sure that the right folks are at the table during that time.
A, a good way to think about it, the DOT is usually coming in for surfacing the actual street itself. The city is usually making decisions around design. So when you look at North Tower and everything that's so great and beautiful about that, it's almost all the city. The, the state built a street, and that's what they would do. Now, I, I do agree with your point, though, that in twenty thirty-two, it's another opportunity to improve a street or make changes, because it's going to go under construction again. But that should be post the bridge reopening.
Certainly, thank you.
Counselor Johnson.
Two points to that. One, this isn't, this improvement won't affect the scheduled resurface or design of the state highway in the future.
No, no.
And the second question, I know maybe this is a scary one, but this construction won't inters, overlap with the bridge closure at all. It'll be done and over with prior to the, prior to that happening, correct?
Yes, but that's why we're moving quickly. Well, I am trying to move, I'm trying to rush every process that I can. The one thing, like, like Director Janigo alluded to, we shouldn't rush design, because the faster you move through design, the more mistakes you get as you get closer, the more that person that didn't learn about it until they saw it on the news at the last minute, you want to really get that right and, and make sure as many people have weighed in that you get as much buy-in. I mean, if we sit and tried to design this and looked at some of the plans that I've looked at, we could be here all night arguing about it, and I'm going to be the last to leap, I have a lot to say about it, and there's a lot to learn about it. So that, that process should not be rushed, but yeah, even if construction got pushed to twenty twenty-six, there's no plan where the, that has the bridge closing by that point.
Right, yeah, twenty twenty-eight, I think, is the date there, so. I just wanted to make sure that that's at the forefront of this, because, and I'm sure it is, I just, I, I would, it's kind of what I was alluding to earlier, and I think that that would be a, probably a disaster if this overlapped.
Well, but your point is actually more important than you're alluding to, I don't, I don't think this project's going, there's, there's no risk of overlapping with the bridge closure, but it's not our last project that we have to get done before the bridge. We should do as many alternate, alternate routes as possible. Winter Street follows this. You know, we're getting, I think we have, we're finishing Hammond, we're doing East Fifth, Tower Avenue, Winter Street is not scheduled yet, and it needs to be as quickly as possible. That's probably, when I talk about people finding alternate routes, it's possible there are councillors here tonight that don't know how to take the Winter Street detour, but you're going to learn that when the bridge closes. And so, and that road is not in great condition. Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Director Janigo, please.
Thank you, sir.
Please.
Winter Street is in the full reconstruction, but as part of the project, so the first, like, the first stage of, first phase of the Blotnick project, the contractor is be, is going to be expected to do a mill and overlay, not much configuration, but mill and overlay drainage work, we're working on the rail crossings now. So there is a plan in place to basically have Winter Street all completed, with the signals that, we already have signals at Tower and Hammond, there should be signals at Catlin and Grand for, for moving along Winter Street when the bridge closure happens.
I'm learning that with all of you, so I'm pleased, but I, expect me to be involved, I'm sure Director Janigo has told me that probably three times, but the, expect a conversation on design of Winter Street, too. Winter Street is a, is a more beautiful street than you think it is, and, and there's an opportunity to improve that, too. And so if there's money laying around, I think there's opportunity there.
Any further discussion? Talk about street design all night if you want. Okay. All in favor of awarding the contract, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item ten point nine, Public Works Director Janigo is recommending approval of an ordinance amending City Code Chapter one twelve, Traffic Code Schedule J, accessible parking zones to add accessible parking sign, do not block side block at twenty-four forty-one Ogden Avenue.
Motion to approve. Motion is by Counselor Moffett, second by Counselor Elm, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
And item ten point ten, Public Works Director Janigo is recommending approval of an ordinance amending City Code Chapter one twelve, Traffic Code Schedule J, accessible parking zones, add accessible parking sign at eighteen oh three Coming Avenue on both sides.
Motion is by Counselor Ludwig, second by Counselor Elm, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Do we have? We have no public comment that I'm aware of, and no further business, and are adjourned. Thank you, Councillors.